City Council Meeting of the City of Lathrow Village. And I would ask the clerk to do roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Garrett.
Here and I am in Lathrow Village, Michigan, in Oakland County.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Here, attending remotely from Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Councilmember Ferguson. Councilmember Ferguson.
He stepped away for a minute.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Here in Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
And Councilmember Stallings.
I'm here in Oakland County and in the city of Lathrow Village.
And Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. I invite all attendees and panelists to say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands.
I had somewhat of a flag, so I was looking at that just in case. All right, um, everyone's here, so I got to do that. So if I could get a motion to the approval of the agenda, please.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call to approve the agenda. Councilmember Ferguson.
Present, Oakland County, Lathrow Village.
Do you approve the agenda?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
And Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Agenda approved. Motion carry.
Thank you. Now, all the items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-conventional by the City Council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of discussion desired. That item will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed separately immediately after the consent agenda approval in its normal sequence on the regular agenda. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Approved. Okay. Do I need to go through the?
You should.
Approval of minutes study session, October 19, 2020. Approval of minutes council meeting, October 19, 2020. And the approval of minutes for the study session of November 9, 2020.
Okay.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? No, I guess there will be no discussion for the consent agenda. So can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, roll call. Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Member Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Consent agenda adopted.
Thank you very much. Um. Sorry, sorry, sorry. I was going through that. So now, next we are at the consideration for approval of the monthly disbursement reports for the month of October 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the monthly distribution reports for the month of October 2020. For a total of $753,998.61 comprised of $414,000 roughly from the general fund, $11,000 from the major roads, $51,000 for local roads, $6,000 from the capital fund, $32,000 from the Downtown Development Authority, and $237,000 from water and sewer.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? I just have one question. So I guess we did send over a ad for the Invokay Task Force. Was that for something else?
Yes, we did. We sent the money. We're still crafting the ad. I communicated with Barbara Tally yesterday, and we have until the 30th to get the actual artwork to her.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any items that they would like to discuss? All right, roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carry regarding the disbursement reports.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration for the acceptance of the departmental reports.
Make a motion to accept the departmental reports?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Departmental reports approved.
Thank you. We don't have any presentations. This is now the opportunity for the public to be able to comment for items that's on the agenda. And you have a three-minute limit for your comments. Is there anyone that would like to comment? Anyone in the audience that would like to comment?
No hands raised.
Okay, well, thank you. There are no public hearings, so we'll be moving on to the acts and requests. We'll up for consideration for approval of the MERS defined contribution plan adoption agreement addendum. Think that would be Pam? Did they spell snow?
I can give an update. So the MERS has requested that we update the two plans. This one, which is the defined benefit, and the other, which is the defined contribution plan as an addendum. This is to ensure the details of your plan are accurately documented on file with them. The information is just supplemental to previous information on file and the effective dates of our plans and will support accurate benefit calculations moving forward. So the first one you have is relative to the defined contribution plan. And that starts on page 73 of your packet.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agreement for the MERS defined contribution plan.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett. Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Next up for your consideration for approval is the MERS addendum defined benefit plan adoption agreement addendum.
And this begins on page 99 of your packet and is similar to the previous motion to accept that this is for the defined benefit plan.
I'll make a motion to an agreement for the MERS defined benefit plan.
Second.
Been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
And Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Next up is the inter-local agreement for Oakland County to approve the designated assessor for the period January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2025.
Mayor and council members, as you know, we contract with Oakland County through their equalization department for the assessing service. And there is a Public Act 660 of 2018 that requires each county to enter into an agreement that designates the individual who will serve as the county's designated assessor. So the attached agreement designates David Heber as our, in his official capacity as equalization officer for Oakland County as the designated assessor for the period January 1 through, it must be 2021, through December 31, 2025.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept the inter-local agreement for Oakland County to approve the designated assessor for the period of January 1, 2021 through December 31. Was that 2021 as well?
2025.
Okay, 2025. Got it. So for the period of January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2025.
Second.
Been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Motion.
Thank you. Um, next is agenda item 11G, which is the Equix authorization of first payment of 2020 sewer cleaning and televising program.
Yes, as a side note, well, first of all, this one starts on page 128 of your packet. But Scott Ringler gave me a major panic attack because he sent in the payment request, and I didn't have a contract for anyone called Equix. But as it turned out, we awarded the contract to diversified infrastructure, and they changed their names. But anyway. So if you recall, if you recall, when you adopted the budget, there was 120,000 designated for sewer fund for the cleaning and televising program. And so this is asking for the first payment in the amount of, the total is $31,918 and change. The actual payment will be $28,726.60 with the difference being withheld as agreed upon for retainage. So you're being asked to approve the first payment for that total amount of the $31,918.44 to Equix.
I'll make a motion to approve the first payment to Equix, formerly known as Diversified Infrastructure Services, for $31,918.44 and authorize the city administrator to sign the related documents.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Can we withhold more for them vibrating my whole house for three hours starting at 7:30 in the morning?
Whoa.
They probably charge extra for that.
Probably. I'm good.
Just to reiterate, this has already been approved in our budget. This is just, you know, just releasing the funds just to make sure that that's very clear, right? Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yeah.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next is agenda item 11E, upgrade of part-time code enforcement officer for full-time position.
And this begins on page 134 of your packet. And mayor and council, if you recall, when we adopted the budget, it included the part-time code enforcement position. That position is currently vacant, is being, I guess, backfilled by our contract. So this would be officially upgrading that position to a full-time position, and the DDA, the Downtown Development Authority, did agree to pay for a portion of the costs relative to this position and the benefits over and above the part-time that we had already budgeted.
I'll make a motion to.
I definitely, okay.
Make a motion to approve the upgrade of the part-time code enforcement officer position to a full-time position with benefits and approve the cost sharing with the DDA and authorize the city administrator to post and hire for this position.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? I know that we talked more at length during our study sessions than I think that's something that we definitely need in the city and I believe by speaking out of turn, but for all the rest of the council people are in agreement with that.
Yep, and just to build on the great momentum that we had, you know, that we had started before our prior code enforcement officer left. There was progress being made, definitely, and it was visible. So that's a good thing.
So, and it will be a short posting period. So if you know of anyone who's interested, might ask them to be alert to those notices. So hopefully we can get them on board by the end of the year, very soon after the beginning of the year at the latest.
That would be great. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Resounding yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Moving to agenda item 11F. This would be the COVID-19 preparedness and response plan.
Yes, one of the opportunities for growth is to be in compliance with the CDC, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, the Michigan Occupational Safety and Health Administration, Oakland County Health, and our governors, any emergency or other orders. So part of that is that we're to codify our processes into an official document. So that's what you have before you. It addresses the basic infection control measures, health surveillance, workplace controls, personal protection equipment, training, and record keeping. This really applies to what's categorized as lower and medium exposure employees. So it doesn't technically apply to our police officers. They're designated as high risk, although they are required to do some of the daily screening and wearing of the mask and things of that nature. So you're being asked to approve the Lathrow Village COVID-19 Preparedness and Response Plan for lower and medium exposure employees.
I'll make a motion to approve Lathrow Village COVID-19 Preparedness and Response Plan for lower and medium exposure employees.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion around? Well, yeah, have we, I know that the amount of people that have had COVID in Lathrow Village. But what I can't remember, have we had, we haven't had an outbreak in the actual office, right?
Not, we've had one contractor who tested positive. He had not been in the office for at least three weeks. So the exposure in the office had so far been, very fortunately, been contained.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, well, roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson. Councilmember Ferguson.
Sorry, couldn't do it fast enough. Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. This is an interesting one.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I didn't have time to talk to you about it in advance. But, but, and working with, let me start off by saying, I'm very proud of the work that our staff has been doing to keep our buildings safe, to keep themselves safe, to keep the public safe. They have truly been going above and beyond. And there is definitely some Corona fatigue going on. Because it's stressful because they are public service and public service, and you have to interact with the public, but there's risks associated with that. And just about everybody these days has health factors that could make it, could compromise their health if they were exposed. So in consideration of the risks that they're undertaking, as well as their exceptional efforts, I'm putting forth a request that you consider a, it's a relatively small, but I think it's meaningful in terms of what it would represent to the employees. And that would be a $250 pandemic bonus because of the work environment in which they've had to work these past weeks, months.
So because I didn't really introduce it, let me, oh, I guess you did introduce it. This was the item, agenda item 11G for the staff pandemic bonus request. Anyone like to make a motion on it?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah.
Bonus authorization.
And I'll second it.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
What, Cheryl, what's the total? I see it's 250 per person, but what's the total dollar amount?
It's in the area of $5,000.
And, and we've got this in the budget to do it? I mean, money.
There's been some cost savings. As you know, one officer position is about to be vacated. So there are some cost savings that would cover it.
Yeah, and as we talked in the study session, we may have some other cost savings as well, so.
And is this, I mean, you're just gonna sound like a Scrooge if you say anything opposite, but is this what common along other municipalities?
I don't know what other.
Employees?
Well, you know, that's actually what brought the concept to me because I was getting notices from a number of municipalities nearby that they are actually not even open to the public.
Right.
At the very least, they have very minimal hours available that the public can come in. And we could go that route, but this being such a small community, they are just simply accustomed to coming in and taking care of their business, especially paying the water bills and property tax bills and things of that nature. So not being open and accessible didn't seem to be the best alternative, but we have put all the precautions that one reasonably can, including the sanitation spray twice a day in the building and through high contact surfaces. So our staff is working when their colleagues in adjacent communities are not. So that's where this thought process came about from.
And they're also, I was just saying, there also, I think, aren't a lot of the staff, like, kind of working across jobs too because certain people aren't in the building at certain times. And so other staff have to pick up that weight and vice versa when, when they're not there.
They're supposed to be working from home, so they still would have the same workload, right?
Yes, and there's accountability for their time in doing that.
So this should not be, I mean, it's not where we should have to have, well, you know, somebody's picking up extra work, like I said, because it is technically, they should, that's how we figured out who can go home and work from home.
Yeah, but not all work can be done from home. So for example, you know, there's certain things, like, for example, if the recreation coordinator is working from home who also handles, you know, the city hall, and something has to be done with the city hall, then staff who are working in this, who happen to be at the city hall, have to pick up that work and go away from other work, so.
Is where if something, if something goes on, it can be organized that they do it when they come in the office, opposed to putting it on someone else, correct?
Not always, but yes.
Well, I mean, less emergency.
Because we're such a small staff, it's very difficult for the cross-training or the cross. And that's one of the issues we have even with the auditors because we don't necessarily have the segmentation of roles and responsibilities that you would ideally have. We don't have enough bodies to do it with.
No, I gotta answer. So, um. That's a tough one. For me, I mean, I was saying, you all can move on with the, is there any other discussion? I'm just, you know, it's, again, kind of like what we talked about in DDA, the feedback that you get of trying to explain why you have a recreation coordinator or recreation person, Parks and Rec person working when we're not doing any type of programs. I've had that, you know, ask, and so it's just, you know, again, kind of like what we were talking about in the DDA and optics of giving out money when to, to, just explain again, so.
Well, and I'm glad you brought that one up in particular because they have been trying to do whatever they can, luckily, for our residents to be engaged and involved. And I think they've been very successful in doing that. But probably even more critically, they've been doing, at least spearheading, most of the efforts relative to the retrofitting of this building, which has absolutely nothing to do with their job description. So people are doing above and beyond what is expected or what they signed up for whenever they first became employed here.
Yeah, I mean, the dog parks are part of Parks and Rec, so yeah, they're busy. I mean, I, I think it's justified. And we've made the adjustment. I mean, COVID is very unusual case, and everyone's needed.
And in that example, the person who's doing most of the COVID preparations, correct me if I'm wrong, is the recreation coordinator because he's in charge of the building, right?
Yes.
No, he's the Parks and Rec coordinator. You have, isn't it Cory who's the recreation coordinator? And the two people that I were talking about? Not one, right?
Cory is divided between the DDA and Parks in terms of her support. And I probably have a portion of her too.
Yeah. I think as Cheryl said, people are going above and beyond their job description. So I think this is good.
Oh, please understand what I'm saying is not what people are doing. That's not the, that's not my point of bringing it up. My point of bringing it up is also the exact same reason our DDA brought it up in the fact of what optics look like to our residents of giving money out or hiring, you know, someone full-time. So I, it's again, just kind of being, and I don't like saying devil's advocate, just kind of bringing up the, from what the conversation was in DDA. And those were residents that were on that board that brought that up.
I think we're doing the right thing and not really concerned about optics. Think, you know, we've been above board and we can explain it.
Just, yeah, it's just a decision to encourage the, it's not, it's not easy, and I'm not surprised because I was just with a company that just did it for 113 employees because of their being, working so hard to keep, keep the company going. It's a, it's a heck of a stress to continue to deal with the public every day. And I just agree with Ian that just make the decision and we will, you know, in respect to the community, I mean, in respect to our citizens, but really, it's, that's been difficult. That's been a difficult challenge for them. And I can't imagine with so many other companies having the option to stay home all of the time and, but then having to deal with, but then having, not only come in, but having to deal with the public. So I'm okay, I'm okay with having. So I'm okay, I'm okay with having to deal with the backlash.
And I don't, I, you know, I'm concerned with optics, but, you know, I, I think in this case, I mean, the, the, the other, the other alternative, you know, optics-wise is we close the city hall. And the optics on that aren't good either, so, you know, I, I, I don't have a problem with this.
You know what? Again, as I've always said.
I get it, Kelly.
And this is what I bring up. It's totally up to you to vote on however you want to vote. This is what I, I bring to you from what has been said to us and to me. So, and at this point, you can have your clerk do the roll call, and you may vote for you like.
You don't, you don't have to explain yourself.
You get it. We totally get it.
Totally get it.
Agree to disagree.
Stand clerk.
Roll call, Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Stallings.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. So, right after that, let's talk about the city hall closing for the 28th.
I'm concerned about optics on that.
Well, okay, so the only reason I put this one in was I was looking at what we did last, you know, last year for the employees. There isn't anything specifically planned, but for the last two years, they've had that one afternoon off prior to the holidays, so I put it forward again.
That doesn't sound good to me, Cheryl.
Well, we'd have to figure out how, how to celebrate socially distanced, but yeah.
Looks to me like she's trying to sneak in two afternoons off, the 18th and the 20th.
I agree. I agree. That's why Pam's covering her face. Like, can we get, get away with this?
I mean, if, if you were inside, you would be closing it down for, for the celebration, correct?
Actually, I just noticed that, Ian.
Yeah.
Siddiqui. I have at it, so I'm gonna make a motion. I just.
I'll make a. I'll make a motion to close at 12 noon on Friday, December 18th for employee appreciation.
Then moved in second. Is there any discussion? Erin Dunn, Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Garrett.
Her.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Lost her.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
What?
And Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. City Administrator.
I think I missed one item, and that was to give the city administrator three weeks off between Christmas.
I wouldn't be surprised at this point. I just really wouldn't. I was scrolling through there and not see it. Why not? They're being, very giving this holiday. Try it. Get it in there.
I don't think so.
Put five names in for the COVID relief for the council people also. How about that?
All right. So, um, you wanted my report, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, first of all, I'm really excited to share with you that we have new holiday decorations around city hall and in the parks, and they'll soon be going up on Southfield Road, 12 Mile and 11 Mile. And that's shared costs with our Downtown Development Authority. So it already is brightening up the whole look of the area, so we're really excited about that. And I want to remind you that there's a joint meeting with the DDA and the Planning Commission on November 30th. So if you could put that on your calendars. I think what we're talking about, the Southfield Road, we did receive some initial information from the road commission in regards to what is being proposed. It's being reviewed now by our planners and, and staff. So November 30th, I believe it's six o'clock in the evening, there will be a Zoom meeting. And also want to remind you that we're going to be closed for Thanksgiving, so that's Thursday and Friday of next week, the 26th and 27th. This week. Oh, yeah, it is this week. Okay, this week. And also to let you know that because of the mandates from the state, we are trying to maximize the amount of time people are working remotely. And in order to make, ensure the safety of the staff, we're closing from 12:30 to 1:30 for lunch. So that we don't have like one person here by themselves at lunchtime. So that's been posted, and we just want to make sure to remind you and the viewing audience that the city hall administration office is closed from 12:30 to 1:30 daily. And in regards to the Lether Village Community Foundation, we have our donation box here at city hall. They're taking donations for the lighthouse, as well as the foundation is having a fundraiser with Shields Pizza. And that's going to be on Sunday, the 29th, and Monday, the 30th, in celebration of their 25th anniversary. And they will be, a portion of the proceeds will go to the community foundation, which supports many of our programs here. That concludes my report.
Thank you. City Attorney.
Want to thank you for my $250 pandemic bonus. I don't have anything tonight.
Oh, boy.
Reports from boards, commissions, and committees. Sacra quarterly report is person, and Sacwa quarterly report.
Nothing in particular to update you on. It's part of their quarterly reports, and they're making their estimations, and they expect to have their rates early next year for our consideration.
Planning, Planning Commission, we didn't, we didn't have a meeting. Our meeting was canceled this month. And then for the infrastructure committee, we did have about an hour discussion in detail of what's, what's happening with our infrastructure needs and the roads and the ditches and so forth. So if people are interested in, in learning the, the detail, that's in the study session recording that will be posted at some point. But to give a very, very, very high level overview, now that the road proposal has been, been passed, we're moving forward, working on selecting potential streets for the first construction season starting this spring. Basically because of the, the fact that it's a very limited shortened design season due to having to wait until the election before doing any work. We're, we're trying to pick streets that have little or no ditching needs in the first year and, and then prioritize those streets in the year two and year three that, that have ditching needs. In addition, we've also, the committee's also begun looking at other infrastructure needs. We have some, some pressing and some legally required issues that we have to address with respect to lead testing, water meters, sewer, water mains, fire hydrants, gate valves, retention tanks, lead abatement, and so on. And so one of the things that the committee had met on last week and spent a fair amount of time talking about is the possibility of getting a, a capital improvement bond to pay for some of these projects in such a way that it won't affect the, the residents dramatically. So we're, we're, we're working on that. And again, if you want more details on that, you can either contact me directly or watch the study session where we talked about the, the, these topics in detail. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other boards, commissions, committees? Okay, any unfinished or new business?
Unfinished business is, and I think it's tied in with what Bruce talked about regarding water losses, water loss. So I thought we were gonna get a quick update here at council, or should I say at a council, not study session, but council meeting once a month. Did I misunderstood, stand that?
I, I can give an update of what we're looking at. Yeah, you want me to give an update on, on water loss?
I, I don't know if it was you or if it was Cheryl for the update on the water loss. I don't think it was you, Bruce.
Well, relative, are you talking about it being on the study session agenda or are you talking about the actual information?
Just, just updates on where we are as far as investigating the loss.
I.
I don't think that was you.
So as was mentioned in the study session, we are looking at having a test of several residential water meters if they are properly calibrated. And on that, making the plans relative to the transition to a new system for the meters.
Okay.
That is the problem.
Okay. Yeah, thanks for the clarification. I thought it was gonna be a separate update, but yep, I appreciate it.
It was included in the infrastructure committee report.
Okay, didn't want to put too much pressure on Bruce there. Just one observation, one more. I guess Oakland County Commissioner Dave Coulter is having a town hall meeting on COVID tomorrow at 7:00 PM. I guess he's supposed to call our phone numbers, and we're supposed to pick up, and we'll be online. So I don't think there's any registering to be had. I guess if your phone does ring, more than likely it'll be Dave Coulter on the other line, or you'll, you'll go, get transferred into that call, so. And that's it for me.
If I could ask, was that just an invitation to the elected officials?
No, no, actually, it's, it's discussing COVID and the numbers and, you know, typically what he was doing like two and a half months ago, where you would get the phone call and you'd be right in that town hall meeting. So it's a town hall meeting, apparently.
Thank you. So that was unfinished new business. Come to a point where we have public comments. Speakers are limited to two minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
No hands raised.
Thank you, Kelda. Any council comments?
Yeah, I'll make one, one, one quick comment. So i- as part of, as part of the infrastructure committee, I repeatedly have the opportunity to have to dig way deep into the budget and, and get really deep in the, in the numbers and the, and the financials of the city. And I, and I've mentioned this in the past in, in, in other meetings, but I just wanted to mention it publicly, that I think the, the treasurer, Pam Brachchi, as well as, you know, Cheryl Mitchell and our, our previous administrations have, have done a fantastic job in the past of, of planning and doing financials so that when we, when we start to look at things like needing money for infrastructure improvements, that, that they've planned for that in the past. And it just, I think it just, you know, when you think about all that's happened with Proposal A, the Headley Amendment, the market crash, and the fact that, that at least until last year, every year we still continued to build our general fund, which put us in a great financial position, you know, while, while most every other city in the state was, was pulling from their general funds and doing deficits. The fact that, that we're financially stable, I think kudos go to Pam, Cheryl, and our previous administrations for, for just doing a great job with respect to that. So I just, it just dawned on me again, yet again, when I got into the financials, working on some of these, these water issues. And I just felt it bringing it up here publicly. So good job, you guys.
Hey, Bruce, yeah, I agree with everything you said, with the exception of one thing. The last city administrator didn't do a damn thing. I think Pam was doing all the work. So Pam, thank you so much for doing all that work. And you definitely get credit for that, as well as Cheryl and the previous city administrators.
Yeah. Including every single one.
I want to make sure that gets on record, okay? Thank you.
That's all I have.
And then that happened. Is there any other council?
I don't know any other one besides.
You said what, Celine?
Nothing, sorry.
Don't worry, others. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you.
I hope you all have, if, if there's nothing else, yeah, we can adjourn. But before we adjourn, just remember, even though this has been a very crazy 2020, there's always something to be grateful for and to try to find that, no matter what the situation is and no matter where you might be in life or going on in your family. So I hope that you all have a very safe Thanksgiving. I know that most of us will probably have a different Thanksgiving. It's just the fact of not being with family in person is gonna be quite different. But, you know, we also have to think about, thank God that we have family to go to perhaps next year or at the next family gathering. So I hope that you all have a very, very great holiday and be safe, and that's it. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, now we got none.
Second, wear your mask, keep your masks on.
Over your nose and mouth.
Yes, your nose and, and your eyes when possible, and enjoy. Yes.
Everyone have a good night. Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.